Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session meeting for Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. The time right now is 5:30 PM. And I will go ahead and ask that Clerk Simonsen, please call the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present and establishing a quorum, Folcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Gamble, Fisher, Scarborough, and Gamble is remote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I haven't heard from Councilmember Walker. Did anybody hear that he is not going to be here this evening? Okay. And I understand from Councilmember Hanford that you'll be needing to leave at 7:00 today and that Councilmember Folcher will need to leave at 7:30. So what we would like to try to do is to try to wrap things up between 6:45 and 7:00 if we can. But if we need to go longer, we certainly are able to do that. With all that said, Councilmember Gamble, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to the council this evening, please raise your hand. If not, I'm going to move on to the next item and spare the script. Okay, I'm going to spare the script. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item number five, announcements and presentations, attached housing market presentation. And I turn to Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two presenters this evening to share with the city council and provide an opportunity for the council to ask questions about the types of development that they do and how those types of developments fit into the Monroe housing market. So we have representatives today from Mill Creek, and they'll be first up at the table. So I'm going to bring them forward, and I think they've got a presentation to share. And I think, are they sharing themselves? So they're logged in and ready to go? All right. They've never presented in this type of format to council members before, so they aren't.
And can we move their table this way so that I can...
Oh, sure. Yeah, we can help. All right. Okay, we're ready?
Yes, some introductions.
Yes. Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name is Meredith Holzmer. I'm a managing director of development in the, we call it the Seattle office. It's a national company, but it's in Bellevue. The local office for Mill Creek Residential, which we'll give you an overview here in just a second. My background is in all different types of real estate development, from land development into Homish County, gosh, almost 20 years ago now, to really complicated urban mixed-use projects, to now, you know, multifamily residential. Been with Mill Creek for about 10 years and born and raised in the Seattle area. And with me is Deanna Bashrova. Deanna joined us about two years ago. She has a master's in real estate from the University of Washington and was working for another development company. We brought her over to join our team, and so she works with me on all aspects of the real estate development process here locally. So we have a presentation that Deanna put together here using what I will admit is a, oh, shoot, a new format for me. So this is not a PowerPoint. This is a really cool tool from ArcGIS. So Mill Creek Residential is a residential development company. But a little bit about us. So the company was founded in 2011, which is not that long ago, but it was founded by about 30 former partners of another large development company called Trammell Crowe Residential that you may have heard of, built especially in the 80s and 90s, lots of particularly garden-style apartments. So in the financial downturn, you know, let's say, commercial real estate was hit like everyone else, so these partners decided to recapitalize, kind of start over with a new company called Mill Creek Residential. There is no connection to Mill Creek, Washington. We get that a lot. It's actually named after a creek in Texas. So, you know, starting from those 30 partners, you know, about 13 years ago, we now have 1,300 associates with the company. And it's, you know, a couple stats here. So last year, we were ranked second-largest developer and second-largest builder of multifamily housing in the country. That said, every office, we have about 21 offices, we all operate locally. So I only work on real estate development projects in the greater Puget Sound area. Our Portland office does the same. So local expertise is extremely important when you're doing real estate development. Occasion, 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 right? So what we do, this is a clip from our website, but down here at the bottom, we don't just do development. We build all of our own projects, so we act as our own general contractor. We also have an acquisitions team that will buy older product and renovate it, rehab it, freshen it up a bit. We have a property management group, so we operate all of our buildings, you know, including maintenance, leasing, asset management, et cetera. And then, you know, investment management. We also do our, we raise our own financing. Some other groups will hire a broker to give them financing. Talk a little bit more about that in the development process. To bring it back locally, so in the Puget Sound market, since 2011, we've actually developed or acquired almost 5,000 apartments. Most of them have been built. A couple have been acquired. So the very first one in the market, Sky at Belltown, this was a 1940s building that we acquired and renovated. Oh, the map isn't zooming in? That's okay. Sorry. One technical pause here. Oh, there we go. All right, there we are on the map. So I'm not going to talk about every single community that we've built, except to say that when we first started in the market, we were literally looking at core Seattle. It's where a lot of the growth was and, you know, a lot of opportunities. And so that's where the first couple of these buildings are. You can see most of them, you might call mid-rise or podium, kind of in the six-to-eight-story building format. Then we decided to look at the east side, move over to Redmond, have completed a couple opportunities in that market. Then we moved up to Everett. This is a community called Alister Parks, very large garden-style community, also old. We've refreshed that one. Skip through a couple more here to talk about the most recent communities that we've built. So Modera Lacy, you can see in this image here, this is pretty typical of what you might find for a larger apartment complex in a city like Monroe. This is what we call garden-style. So, you know, three- or four-story, walk-up, they don't usually have an elevator. Usually the parking is on the surface. Deanna will get more into that when we compare different types of multifamily housing. So that's one we recently completed. It's a lease-up. It's doing very well. We have a podium community in North Gate under construction. Story there is that it's located next to transit. A lot of times, density and transit go hand-in-hand together. So they know new light rail station in North Gate. So that was the genesis there. Same with Shoreline. City of Shoreline has a couple of light rail stations, and they did a bunch of upzoning around those light rail stations. So we took, you know, saw the opportunity there. There's been quite a bit of development there of this type of, you know, four, five, six, seven-story product. And then our most recent, we just started construction on a community in Kirkland. And it's, within Kirkland, it's in a little bit more of a suburban location. So this is what we would call podium construction. It does have below-grade parking, but it's not maybe as tall as what we might build in Seattle. It looks a little more residential. It's a large building, but it, the differences in materials and modulation kind of breaks down the scale there. So this is Modera Bridle Trails, which is right next to Bridle Trails State Park in Kirkland. So we wanted to quickly run through, we call it the typical development process. This is our process. It's also very similar of other large multifamily developers like us. So, you know, we start with market research and looking for sites, right? So what markets do we think have rents that are high enough to justify the cost of building new housing? You know, we call it make pencil or generate a sufficient return for our investors and lenders. Once we've identified markets that we like, then we try and find sites that we like. You know, maybe it's a site that has a very small building on a very large amount of acres, right? So it seems to us to be underdeveloped, which means really that it's worth tearing down whatever is there to build something new. Obviously vacant sites, you don't have to tear down anything, so the value's in the land. But, you know, a lot of times, there might be a site out there that someone thinks is, oh, you know, that really needs to get redeveloped or turned into something else. But if there's a business on it that's generating income, it needs to be worth eliminating that income, tearing down that building. And whatever you build in its place has to be worth more, right? Otherwise, you wouldn't tear it down. If you were buying a house, you wouldn't tear it down. If it was a perfectly good house, you'd just remodel it, right? So that, it's the same process that we go through when we're looking at sites. Then we go through an internal process of making an offer. You know, we'd call it a letter of intent if that is accepted. We have an internal investment committee made up of about 15 people nationally that review all of our opportunities and make sure that we're making a sound investment. Then we would enter into a purchase-and-sale agreement, just like you would if you were buying a house. And then we have what's called a due diligence period. And during this time, we are, you know, hiring a third party to validate our market assumptions. We're doing environmental testing, geotech testing. We're getting a survey done. We're having an architect, you know, do some massing, confirm what we think we can build on it. We're talking to the jurisdiction, what, you know, do we understand their process? Are there, do we understand their code? Are there any pitfalls? So it's really just making sure, we're reviewing title, right? Is there some easement that we don't know about? So we go through all of that, and then we say, okay, this is a go. And that's usually, you know, when we make some kind of non-refundable deposit on the land. And we really, you know, get into the full pre-development process, which is all of the design, engineering, permitting that's needed to get to full construction documents. Once we have a pretty good idea of what the building's going to look like, what the rents are, how much it's going to cost, then we have to go get it financed. And you have to, you have to have a pretty good idea of what you're doing before you can get anyone to invest in your, in your project. There aren't very many developers out there that can self-fund, and certainly not for a large-scale community like the ones we build that are, you know, 100 apartments all the way up to 400. So we need an investor and a construction lender on everything that we build, as do all of our, most of our competitors. Even if they're REIT, they would have to go through a process to get those funds too. So, you know, the investors and lenders, they, they have a target, and they say, okay, well, this is how, this is the return on investment I need. It's the same as investing in any other business, right? You look at how much it costs to operate, you look at how much income it brings in, and you need the income to be higher than the cost. There's, you know, a threshold by which an investor, it has a go or no-go on that. And, you know, these days, it's probably, you know, the yield on cost probably needs to be about 6%, six to seven probably. And then the lender, also, they do a same calculation. You know, one is, is there sufficient income to repay this loan? And then, you know, lenders on construction projects, they, they want to make a little bit more than just the interest rate, right? So they, they add a little on top of that because then they're going to, you know, banks lend to each other, and so they're going to...
I'm ready. This morning, so that was super exciting. And then I told her I was feeling so off and ready.
Go ahead and pause for a second. Yeah.
Okay.
Just go ahead and hold off for a second. While we've got a moment, just to see if this comes back, we'll let the record show that Councilmember Walker came into chambers at 17:44. Doesn't sound like we've got the speaking anymore, so we'll go ahead and continue. I'm sorry about that.
So I guess I was getting a little long-winded there anyway, so it was a good, it was a good break.
I was, I was interested in the six to seven percent plus and...
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, and then for the lender, you know, they, they do their own calculation called a debt yield, and that's usually a little bit higher. So the lenders, they're much more risk averse, and, you know, so they're the more conservative dollars. So, you know, with, with the recent increase in interest rates, the, the effective interest rate that we're paying on our construction loans right now is about eight to eight and a half percent. So it's pretty high. We do expect that to, everyone's hoping, you know, that they could start to come down in the next year. So that, that hopefully should free up a little more money and, you know, get deals flowing again. So, you know, we line up the investor, we get the construction loan, we have, you know, final costs, final plans, we have entitlements. Hopefully, we have at least a few of the permits. Then we're ready to purchase the land, close the construction loan, and start construction. So we, we can't close on the construction loan until we're literally ready to start. They, they don't, that's part of the risk averse, so. So all of that process up until starting construction generally takes at a minimum 18 months and can take well over two years. Part of that depends on the entitlement and permit, you know, timeline, if you need a rezone, if there's one designer view, things like that. So it's a long process. And, you know, costs for, you know, say, a 300-home project, the upfront costs could be $3 million, not including land deposits. So it's real money that, you know, you're spending on that specific site that's not going to translate to anything else. And so that's all the drawings and the permits and stuff. So it's a pretty big investment. But that's, you know, real estate development is a little bit of a risk-reward business. That's, that's our job. Then, you know, construction is usually about two years, and then lease-up is another year to a year and a half. So, you know, at a minimum, every, every project that we do, every community we build, it's, you know, five to six years. And then, you know, then we're operating it. So it's a long process, but it's a rewarding one. You know, it's pretty exciting to see a piece of dirt then turn into places that people are living. So that's why we do it. And then, this actually, this came from our, our boss, who's one of our regional managing directors. He, you know, scope, schedule, and cost, those are all the things that he's always asking about. And so by that, which is, I guess, maybe a variant on location, location, location. But, so the scope is, you know, what is the product? What is it that we're building? What does the market research tell us we should be building? Is it the right place? You know, amenities? Do we need a pool and a clubhouse and a coworking room and a fitness center? Or not? All of the, you know, those cost money. So we've got to figure out what's the right scope. You don't want to miss it. It's hard to go back and build it or unbuild it later, right? You know, in our, in podium and high-rise, parking is another one we have a lot of discussions about because you're putting the parking underground. It's really expensive. You don't want to build too much. But if you don't build enough, you can't go back, dig it up, and add more parking later, right? So we're always trying to, you know, figure out what the right amount is there. Schedule is especially important for our construction team, of course, but, you know, how long does it take to get entitlements? What are the risks there? How long is it going to take to get the drawings done, to get ready to start construction? And as soon as we start construction, you know, we're always asking, how long does it take to complete? Because we have this construction loan at this, you know, eight-plus-percent interest rate that's just ticking, and we can't start paying that down until we have income. So we always want to just get there as fast as we can without making mistakes. And then the cost, so the note here about aligning the cost, you know, we say per door, but the cost per apartment and the income that's generated for that, for that apartment, those need to be in line. Just as a, you know, a home builder will look and say, okay, I'm going to pay $200,000 for the land, I'm going to spend another $200,000 building the, building the house, and then I think I can sell it for $600,000, right? And, you know, so there's that extra $200,000 there that, you know, is profit and overhead, right? We don't have exactly the same equation, but that, it's, it's a similar concept, right? And so, you know, as Deanna will talk about with the types of multifamily, if you have a site, you don't want to build a high-rise if you're not getting high-rise rents, right? You'd just be way out of whack. Or if you go into a submarket and you see that everything out there that's built is, you know, townhomes or single-family homes, you come in with this eight-story podium, you know, that can work, but there's no proof that, that those rents are there, right? And it costs a lot more to build that podium than it does to build a single-family townhouse. So we're trying to match that up, not be too pioneering. Now, Deanna, we'll, we'll go through kind of some basic categories for types of multifamily rental housing that are out there.
Before we move on to that, I'd just like to check with the council, because you've just gone through the financing, entitlement, permitting, and see if the council has any questions. Councilmembers, do you have any questions before we move on to the different types of attached product? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. So here, next, we have a few examples from Mill Creek portfolio to illustrate different types of multifamily buildings. So we won't take, for the sake of time, we will not get into too much detail about materials and costs, but we rather would just give a general overview, starting from the simplest sort of horizontally programmed communities to a more complicated vertically programmed community. So townhomes and garden-style communities would be our first, sort of the more simpler product. It would be surface parked, primarily residential. Amenities would be in a detached building, leasing office, gym, things like that. There would be like a clubhouse in a detached building. It's rare for this type to have retail, but if retail is present, it would be on a sort of a detached building as well somewhere at the lot, not on a ground level. So up next, we have slab-on-grade, which is typically three-to-five-story wood frame construction with a layer of concrete across sort of the, the foundation area. Amenities and leasing office, as you can see in this example of Modera Woodstock, are usually on the ground floor. Pretty unusual for buildings like that to have retail, but if, if it's present, it would be on the ground floor as well. Next is a wrap, also known as Texas Donut. Typically consists of, just like a central above-ground parking. You can see a little bit of it here on the left, and then it's sort of surrounded or wrapped by four to six stories of wood construction. Next would be podium. The most common podium type is five-over-two, which is five levels of wood construction sitting on top of two-level podium. The podium part usually houses leasing office, amenities, retail tenants, so buildings like that would get retail typically. And some parking would go on the podium part as well, but predominantly retail parking. And then usually, since the product like that would go into an urban area, a lot of parking would go sub, subground. So because of that, podiums are typically penciling in high-density urban markets where rents can support that cost. And to finish it off is a high-rise, which is nine-story-plus. So it's made of concrete and protected steel, exclusively downtown core product, some levels of parking below grade, elevated amenity package, and these also often incorporate retail on a lower level. So that wraps up the multifamily building types. And then sort of reverting back to development process milestone that Meredith was talking about, I'm just going to give a quick overview of a brief couple of steps that we take when we look at a site. So when we, you know, get interested about a site, we typically start looking into area amenities. We'll take a drive-by and look what's in the neighborhood. I took a drive down the city of Monroe a few, a couple months ago, and as we can see here, it's got charming Main Street with a pretty robust retail and office tenant. So there is some area amenities too that are mapped here, some of them. It's nice that it's close to Pinfield. There's some recreational amenities close by, so all of that is pretty attractive to us when we'll select a site. So once we get familiar with the area amenities, we dive deeper into multifamily market. So we typically look at different tools such as, say, WalkScore that's on the screen. We'll look at school ratings, we'll look at census reports, and just to gather information about, you know, demographic in the area. We also use some industry tools.
You know, I'll just, just on the WalkScore, I mean, it, you know, it's kind of a fun stat, but that, and usually, it's funny, there, usually there's a transit score also if Monroe doesn't have one, but, but that, it, it's just a quick snapshot of giving us some indication about, you know, obviously, if there's a transit, like we developed a building on Capitol Hill that had a transit score of 100. So that tells us that we probably don't need that many parking stalls, right? If you could walk to things and you can, you know, there are people who bike as well, but, but primarily walking and transit, it gives us just kind of a, it's a quick stat that tells us, okay, you know, Monroe, we probably need to provide a decent amount of parking, right? Like, most errands are probably performed, done by car. People are probably commuting to work, you know, by car, not by transit, right? So it just gives us kind of a quick gut check on, you know, what, what we should look for for product type of parking.
Just ask a follow-up on that, then. We do have transit here in Monroe. It's not, it's certainly not Capitol Hill.
I know, yeah.
So I was just wondering whether or not buses, we have a 30-minute bus to and from Everett every day. Seattle, it's just two, two bus rides in and back.
Yeah.
But would, would that normally have triggered something?
It should, yeah. Which is actually, it is a little surprising because, yeah, in fact, I know there's bus stops. Yeah, seen them, but...
I was just curious.
And I don't, I don't know how you contact WalkScore and tell them, hey, you guys are missing a whole, a whole category here. But yeah, I mean, bus, you know, buses still, and, you know, rail gets all the, kind of, I want to say, sexy feeling. But, you know, rail is sexy, but buses still help, you know, most people get around by transit.
Thank you.
Should, should register as something.
Okay, thank you.
And just, this is just a sample of one of the tools that we would typically use. It's not, anyways. So in addition to public tools like that, we use our industry market analytics software. There, there's a few of them. So there's one that's, we have on the screen here. This one typically focuses on the larger-scale multifamily community and small, but here Small, but here you can see that it only caught one, um, uh, larger-scale multifamily community, and that's Tera at Monroe. So software like that, like here, just helps us to identify and then analyze competitive set. Cause sometimes there could be 20 apartment buildings and we sort of, we can choose which ones are we competing against. Um, so going back to Tera at Monroe, we then would go into each of the comps and, um, study, you know, facts like unit count, vintage, amenity package, uh, unit finishes, um, and operational statistics such as occupancy level and concessions, if they have any. And just like leasing velocity, we'll tour all the comps, talk to leasing agents, things like that. So we'll also do some Googling. So we Google, you know, apartments in Monroe and we noticed that a lot of the product is smaller-scale multifamilies, such as Parkview on the screen, so 60 units. Um, size-wise smaller, but the rest of the details like vintage and maybe amenity package and unit finishes would be sort of similar to Tera at Monroe. Um, I can conclude here. Pass it over to Meredith.
Yeah. And so I, I think just the, what we wanted to end on here is, you know, what, what we think the opportunity is in Monroe. And so I, you know, apparently 1991 was big here in Monroe, but you know, looking at, at what exists in Monroe, um, what we've observed, you know, a couple of visits and stuff. Obviously, we don't live here. Our point of view is in East Falls City, so not too far away. But, um, there's quite a bit of retail that can be, you know, for, for a smaller-sized community, it does seem pretty well-served, uh, by, you know, the, the big box and, and the smaller-scale retail. But what we didn't see is really any newer, maybe remotely new multifamily housing. Um, you know, what we've seen nationally and especially in this market is that, uh, as interest rates have gone up, that's piled on top of a trend that we've had since COVID of, of rapid increase, single-family home prices, uh, that have outpaced wage growth. And so what we're generally seeing, and I, I don't have specific stats from Monroe, is that it's harder for first-time home buyers and people are renting for longer because they need, you know, the average housing payment has gone up. There's a, a pretty big delta, uh, in most markets that we track between the cost to own a home and the cost to rent a home. So just looking at your principal and interest payment versus the average rent is a large gap. So we think that there is a need, uh, for more multifamily housing and for, you know, a little bit newer, fresher multifamily housing. Um, you know, for Monroe, I think, you know, we've listed on here kind of the, you know, frankly, the lower end of the density spectrum. Uh, you know, I, I, I think, uh, you know, I, I, I did see, I have seen, you know, driving around to somewhat newer-looking townhomes. Um, I think, you know, garden, there's existing garden product. I think, uh, that having some new and improved garden product would benefit, benefit that there's an opportunity for that. And then the slab on grade, and the key with the slab on grade is that you're minimizing that concrete. Concrete costs much more to build out of wood. And so, you know, it literally means there's a concrete slab on the ground. There's no basement, there's no subterranean parking. You know, that, that concrete slab is just supporting the wood framing up above, which could be, you know, three to five stories max. But it would have an elevator, so that has a distinction here, uh, going up above where the garden height. Uh, so, I mean, we're excited about Monroe. I, I know that you guys have been working on some potentially comprehensive, but we think there's great opportunity here and we want to do something here. Uh, and then we ended with some, some photos of, um, more recent. We've, uh, uh, this is, it's called Beckett Cottingham. Beckett, we have a couple of different brands, uh, because we nationally try to ensure consistency of our product. We have lots of national standards. So this is a recent one that, that we completed in, in Houston called Beckett by Mill Creek. Gives you a little bit of a look on the inside as well. All right, thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Um, I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
One, uh, the apartments that you were showing back to 1991, we've, um, I'm familiar with other apartment projects that have come here in town. Um, one of them, most recently over by Woods Creek on the east end of our downtown. Lance, how many units was that? And what's the name of it again? I keep wanting to say Woods Creek.
River's Edge.
River's Edge, yeah. How many units was that?
It's not in our software. It's Googling.
I was just curious about the number of units, so. All right, so we've, we have had other, um, multifamily come to Monroe. Uh, some of it has been subsidized, um, and that's what River's Edge is. But, um, just, just sharing that there have been other products also.
Yeah, and we, a lot of our market survey software, if it is subsidized, it kind of gets just put in the, in a separate category and doesn't track. Could I ask, have you been happy with the, with the, or is it? We'll go, you know, we'll go drive around.
I, I recommend going and looking at it, yeah. Um, I, I think that even though it's subsidized, it, it demonstrates that there's at least a demand for, for housing, even though it is subsidized. And, um, sure, I mean, it'd be, it'd be nice to see maybe some different architecture and other elements. The, the second item though, that I had a question on, um, gets to the issue of ownership and apartments versus condos. Is, is there, one of, one of the things is that it, it's nice to offer people attached housing product that's lower cost, that's, you know, that they can own. So they have something at the end of the day that they can turn around and sell and use that as a down payment on another place to live. What sort of analysis do you go through with condo versus apartments in this?
Um, well, we, and I, I think that might, but, yeah. But so I, just, Mill Creek as a company, uh, we don't do for sale. And it's, it's really a risk conversion thing. Washington State in particular has, has very tough condo convention laws that I know that they've been trying to tweak a little bit. And so, um, we have found that a lot of developers don't do one, they do one or the other. They don't really flip-flop in between. So it, yeah, it's, it's more risky. You know, apartments also provide long-term cash flow, which is nice, nice to keep in mind. So we, I think you're going to get a presentation of course.
Okay. Uh, it, it was important for me to hear the response. That's something that I have experience with also where there was a reluctance at a, a place I used to work for us to do projects that, um, uh, use condominiums. And it was because of the state law and it's one of the things that I know that the council and I have been pursuing at the state level to try to, um, create more equity or parity between a detached and an attached residential product, so.
Yeah, we would, we would support that because we do, I mean, some of our buildings, we build and hold for a very long time. Sometimes we sell, sometimes it's opportunistic, but people who buy our buildings sometimes are interested in condo conversion. You know, we then usually have to draft a whole bunch of documents to make, you know, we don't want any more, you know, that. So I, yeah, I think, I think there's the opportunity for improvement there at the state level.
I appreciate that, thank you. Are there any other, uh, questions from the council? Go ahead, Councilmember Henford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I was wondering if you could go back to the last slide where you talk about from Monroe.
Sure.
What, it sounded like there's three options, but I wasn't hearing necessarily what your, like the three options, it sounds like you're not really sure yet. What you would be proposing from Monroe?
Sure, yeah, I think, um, a lot of times it, it depends on the particulars of a, of a site. This presentation was meant to be more general from Monroe, but rather than from specific to a site. So that, you know, um, you know, of these townhomes is the lowest density. So for us, that would mean we need a larger site. You know, it's, we're just, for a national company, we're just, we're not cost-effective trying to go in and build 20 townhomes, you know, a small site.
If, if I could just add real quick to underscore, um, the presentations tonight are just in general about, uh, developing attached product. Uh, they are not site-specific.
Okay. So, you know, it, it's really what's the size of the site? What's the configuration? What's around the site? You know, is it all single-family? Is it higher density? So the, you know, I, I don't think we would, uh, there would be any sites in Monroe where we would be proposing more deaths than that. So a sweet spot would probably be around the three to four stories.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher. I know the mic, the microphones are challenging.
You guys aren't here every Tuesday. I struggle turning on the microphone every Tuesday.
You have to, you have to push and hold. And if you hold too long, it turns off, yeah.
Um, 166 units at River's Edge. That's all I have.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
We'll check it out most night.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming tonight and presenting.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll have Mark Bertoldi with Pacific Ridge come up and talk about the type of product that Pacific Ridge is building in the New York communities.
You guys are pretty formal. Well, and I have to follow up. They have a, they have a nice slideshow and I, uh, I had a, I just did mine and I haven't done a PowerPoint since college, so it's been a while. Hopefully it's okay.
They didn't have PowerPoints when I was in college.
Yeah. It's been, it's been some time. Um, okay, so thanks for, um, giving me the time to come out here. I know that this isn't, um, site-specific, but I did actually mention a site in my presentation, so I apologize if I screwed that up. But, um, I'm, uh, I'm Mark Bertoldi. I'm with Pacific Ridge. I'm actually, uh, fairly new at Pacific Ridge. Um, I am not new to the industry though. I, um, I had my own brokerage for about 15 years and I did land, only land. I'm from the area. I grew up here. I graduated high school from Cameach High School in 1999, so I've seen all the growth happening here. And, uh, and so, yeah, I've, uh, went to college at WSU, came back, was in real estate development, um, and then started brokering deals. And for 15 years, uh, D.R. Horton was always my biggest client. They closed every deal that I sold them. And, um, they, uh, they're a reason why I have a mortgage payment. And, um, just recently, um, Pacific Ridge, um, asked me to come work with them and to do land acquisitions for, for them. And so that's what I'm doing, um, now. And so D.R. Horton is a large company. Um, they're in 90 markets and 29 states. Uh, they're the number one home builder in Builder Magazine for the past, I think it was the past 10 years now, 20 years. Um, their headquarters is out of Arlington, Texas, but I sit here as somebody that is not from Texas. I sit here as somebody who grew up in the area and I definitely, um, you know, I know the, the housing pain of what's going on right now and the high cost of living. So, um, now D.R. Horton was, uh, I guess the next slide, acquired, uh, Pacific Ridge Homes in 2015. Pacific Ridge is out of Bothell. Um, we've, uh, grown as a, as a company. Um, we're now 69 employees. I remember Pacific Ridge was fairly small and then they got bought out by D.R. Horton and, uh, they quickly grew, uh, to Snoomish County's number one home builder, I would say. We've got, uh, 28, um, we're, we're all in-house, um, pretty much just like Mill Creek Residential. Um, we, you know, we build our, our own homes. We outsource during feasibility to Geotex. Um, we'll do phase one, phase two if needed, all that's outsourced. Uh, we do title reviews during feasibility, very similar to what Mill Creek, uh, Residential does. Uh, I guess the only difference is, is that, uh, you know, we're a publicly traded company and we are self-funded, um, you know, corporate, um, we're, we're a self-funded company. So, um, we're during, you know, contract, we're not out, um, raising money to close the deal. Um, and, uh, so, um, next, so our company, um, like I said, uh, Pacific Ridge Homes is, um, we, we typically try to have, um, we're, uh, we're, um, we typically try to have about 400, uh, starts a year. And so, um, that gives us, so if you look at this spreadsheet here, we're typically, you know, that's our goal is for 400 starts, which gives us close to, you know, 400 close homes and we're trying to acquire 400 lots a year. That's like our average, our average deal. That's what we're trying to do. And as, if you're probably looking around, there's not a whole lot of land left to be doing that. That's pretty tough to do. And so, you know, we have to start thinking of other options and maybe going up north a little bit. Uh, but we love this area and we've had a lot of success in this area and we want to continue to build in this area. Um, some of our notable projects is Cathcart Crossing. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that one, but that's, was owned by Snohomish County and that's a 286-unit townhome project. I was actually the broker on that deal representing Pacific Ridge through that transaction. They worked together with the county and now they're also building the, the 286 units, but they're building, uh, a parking lot for the county as well, next door. I mean, obviously that cost was part of the deal. It's not like they're doing it for free, but it was part of the deal. So they're doing a parking lot. And then right across the street is Eastview Village, which is, um, another county-owned project. And I guess what I'm getting at is that we've had a lot of, we've had some success working with municipalities in this area. Hasn't always been easy, but we've gotten the deal closed and, and it works. It's working. And Eastview Village is, um, it's a, it's a large project. It's, uh, 575 single-family lots, um, 366 townhomes, uh, 360 apartment units and some commercial there. Wisteria Lane is in Linwood. That's 125 townhomes that we're in for permit right now. Ivy Terrace is another one that we're under construction. That's 89 townhomes. And Grayson Square is the, um, I don't know if you guys know the old skate deck, but there, a lot of people were not happy that that got ripped down. But, uh, I think that eventually the land just got too valuable and then the owner wanted to sell it. And so, um, I, I gotta go back a little bit. My, uh, the division president is Justin Goff. He's actually, he owned Pacific Ridge before it got bought out by D.R. Horton. And he's also somebody who went to high school in this area, grew up here. I would say most of our employees are all within the Snohomish County jurisdiction. The guy that builds our homes, our, our VP, um, vertical, he lives here in Monroe. So we're all, you know, a lot of this stuff is here in-house. Grayson Square and Monroe Woodlands is, that was before my time, but that, I don't know if you guys know that one, but that was 200 single-family homes, um, in ironwood. That's also sold out and that was 88. Those are just some notable projects that we've done, um, over the years. So, um, this is the, in my opinion, this is just my kind of opinion here, is that we're in a housing crunch and I have, I think that there's four key factors. Um, you know, I, I started doing, um, selling land right before the financial crisis hit and it just seemed like new construction never caught back up. Like life moved on, uh, family moves, moved on or families, you know, uh, people got their jobs back, families grew and, but new construction just never caught back up. And we're also up against a really tight growing growth boundary line. Um, it's moved out a little bit, but not much. All that It's moved out a little bit, but not much. All that land pretty much got eaten up pretty quick. That's the land that's being questioned, that's part of the annexation in Snohomish County. We're also up against low, a low, low existing home resales due to low interest rates during COVID. So a lot of folks may be refinanced during COVID and nobody wants to sell their home anymore because they're at a 3% interest rate. So we've got lack of land. We're up against an urban growth boundary line that's really tight, no resales. And, you know, I'm not, I don't want to blame the planning departments, but there, there's a logjam and they're busy. And sometimes it's pretty lengthy reviews. There was one deal in particular that I worked on that it took, you know, two and a half years just to get a preliminary plat approval for another jurisdiction. And so it's, you know, those type of things that are creating this like wave of no inventory for new homeownership. And I'm just a, you know, a believer in homeownership. I, I know that there's a housing crisis and everyone, you know, it's tough, you know, I guess I was sharing with, I was sharing with Deborah that like my main thing is like, I have a nephew, sounds like, I sound like a politician when I'm talking right now on this, but I have a nephew who is a, his wife is a nurse and he's a tradesman. And they're from this area. They grew up here in Mill Creek and they want to stay in this area. But they, there's just, there was no inventory. They couldn't afford it. So they had to move out, pretty far out north. And now they're in a battle of a real long commute just to get in the house that was affordable for them. And so I'd like to see more inventory for someone like my nephew who could stay in the, in the area and not, you know, have a rental and not be, you know, stuck in a rental his whole life. You know, I'd like to see him get some equity and be able to grow for his family and use that equity to A, pay off student loans or, you know, however he wants to do it. So, but that's just the thing is that, you know, I'm a strong believer in homeownership. I'm somebody who owns a home and not too far from here. And, you know, I've, you know, I've got some equity that is, is nice and it's, you know, it can go a long way, especially for young families. So. I guess I wasn't supposed to talk about the sites, but this is the site that we were kind of looking at as doing a townhome project. You know, it would be very similar to, to our Cathcart Crossing project. We would, you know, we're three-story townhomes. We have different types of units. We have some units that are, you know, two-car garages side by side, some units that are tandems. They're about 22 feet wide, 65 feet to 75 feet deep, depending on the backyards, three stories. And they're all fee simple. We build everything fee simple, so it's their, it's their, you know, it's your own parcel. It's your own piece of property that you own. You're not part of an association. And so, and we identified, I, I looked at the site and I thought it would be, you know, a great site to establish the walking ability of being able to walk to Red Robins, being able to walk to certain amenities that are within that corridor there, but at the same time having homeownership and you're keeping, you know, the folks that live here that maybe we might be forced to move north, like my nephew, but he can maybe stay here because he can afford a home here in this area. And like our units are nice. I, you know, I'd recommend going to Cathcart Crossing. And, you know, there are larger units are four bedrooms. And I kind of get into the sizes. I'll get into Cathcart Crossing here in a little bit, but they're, they're nice. They're not.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead and continue and then we'll get to Councilmember Starborough.
Okay, yeah. But I would recommend going to Cathcart Crossing just right down the road and check it out. I think it's a, it's a beautiful project and I think it would go, it would be something very similar to what we'd want to do here. And like I said, they're all fee simple units and so everyone has their own ownership. This is my next slide.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
So I'm just, you know, going back, you know, homeownership, I'm, like I said, it just, you know, it's an incentive for families to stay put within the community and, you know, laying their roots. You know, they're not having to leave, you know, to go buy homes. It allows families to build long-term wealth and reinvesting back in their communities, you know, through taxes and, you know, other things like, you know, being able to walk out your door, walk to Red Robins. It all, you know, keeps it all in-house. And it just offers stability, independence, community participation and so forth. I, I don't want to throw the rentals under the bus there, sorry. But I can go to the next slide. And then this is the Cathcart Crossing one. Like I said, it's 286 townhomes, two commercial pads. We were able to work, I know it's not a whole bunch of commercial, but we were able to work with the local municipality there. We're Snohomish County and we, you know, carved out a couple of commercial pads. There was a coffee stand and, you know, I think there was some more that was planned, but I think that they went for the density. But, you know, we're definitely open to working with, you know, if, if there's a carve-out needed for commercial, we're open to doing it. It just would be during planning. This is the product that's at Cathcart Crossing. Like I said, the Addison, which is our biggest unit, it's a, it's a, it's a nice, it's four bedrooms, three bath, two-car garage, three-story, almost 2,000 square feet. It's 1,800 square feet. And then it goes down, you know, to a little bit smaller, but they're fairly nice-sized units where sometimes you think of a townhome being, you know, pretty, you know, smaller or a condo or a con, you know, apartment, but having something that's almost 2,000 square feet with a two-car garage is, and having ownership is nice. And this is just a couple of pictures of our product. As you can see, the three stories. We are, let's see, we're, we're duckless. We're energy efficient. I think that's pretty much standard right now anyway. You have to have all that. But I don't really, I didn't really get into the actual, I mean, we have quartz countertop. You know, I didn't bring a whole thing of the material that, you know, we used to build the homes, so I apologize for that. But, yeah, this is just some of the interior that is in, that is in our product. And I would, like I said, if you ever had time to go through, we're actually having some pretty good success out at Cathcart Crossing. I think we've hit a nice price point, although it's a little bit higher, but we're like in the sevens to sixes. And I think people, 600,000 to sevens, and I think people are seeing that it's kind of nice that it's not a million-dollar home that you have to go out and try to purchase to, to stay in the area. These are just a few more pictures of our insides. They all come with appliances, washer, dryer, dishwasher, refrigerator. And it's, like I said, it's currently under construction right now. It's currently under construction right now. We're, we just got certificate, we're getting certificate of occupancy here shortly. And we've already had quite a few pre-sales on it already, so. And like I just was wanting to look at, it just, you know, like I said, that we're, we're built energy efficient. And, you know, all of our, all this, this magnolia line that we use, which is the Cathcart spec level, that's what we would propose, you know, here. And it's, they all come with their electric car, you know, pre-wire, energy-efficient appliances, high-end, efficient, duckless and heating cooling systems, tier-three water heaters. So overall, I just want to thank you for your time. Like this is pretty new and to me, I've never, I've really had to do anything like this. But I, like I genuinely like, like I said, I grew up here and I like really care about the area and I love to see more people get into homes. Actually, when, before I had my, my original meeting with the city, I took my daughter out here. I asked her, I was like, we just did a little drive and I said, would you ever, you know, what do you think? Would you like to walk out of your townhouse? And she's like, yeah, yeah, that'd be so cool. Like I can go to this store and this store and do this and that. And I was like, yeah, it's all walk, you know, walkability. And, and I think, you know, at the same time, you, you know, hopefully, you know, you have your own home that you own. So it's a thing called yours, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so just turning to the council, I know that there was a project-specific slide. I'm going to ask that the council keep your questions to general questions and not specific to within the city limits or potential projects there. Councilmember Starborough, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you, Cathcart Crossing, is that there on Highway Nine?
Yes, sir.
In Cath, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That is huge.
Yeah, it's a big one. That, that wall was pretty expensive to build out. Yeah.
Well, thanks for clarifying that because I've been asking myself what it is as I've been driving by for some time.
Sorry for the traffic. You know, hopefully the, hopefully the, the parking right will help out, but yeah, yeah. And then across the street is going to be Eastview Village. And that's going to be the, the larger, that's, yeah, across, like, kind of wraps around Glacier Peak High School. Yeah.
You're welcome. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for the great presentation. Just wanted to know what the interest has been in both of these projects? And when do you go about sort of advertising them to sell? At what point does that take place and has that started to take place for Cathcart?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Cathcart is already online and yes, we've had quite a few pre-sales. Like I said, I'm fairly new, so I don't know exactly, exactly the marketing process that they, I assume you're talking about Cathcart. Yeah, I don't know exactly the marketing process, but, you know, we've already have pre-sales before the plat has been recorded. So, oh, okay, yeah. So the plat has not been recorded yet and we can, it's Snohomish County jurisdiction, so each jurisdiction is a little bit different, but we're, we were able to build and then get some pre-sales. And right now, we're, the plat just got recorded and we're real close to getting occupancy, certificate of occupancy, excuse me. So, really high. Like, I mean, I think in the first, like, weekend, we had, I think it was like eight sales. The problem right now that we're running into is getting that certificate of occupancy and it's taken a little bit. So there's some management that's been going on with our sales team of, you know, hey, guy, you know, to the future homeowners, hang in there. We're almost there. We almost have it, but the sales have been, yes, and it's been a really, I mean, a good price point. So, you know, I, I think they were in the eights, or sorry, the seven to sixes, depending on the unit. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions from the council? All right. Thank you very much for coming in and presenting. And Mark, Deanna, and also Meredith, thank you. I really appreciate you coming and presenting today.
Thanks.
Take care.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Yes. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And what I'd like to do is, councilmembers, since we have people leaving at 7 o'clock, is to bypass for right now councilmember reports and the mayor administrative reports and hop right into discussion items. And then as time allows, come back to item six and seven. Is that okay with council? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and move on to item number eight. We'll come back to six and seven. And this would be the Draft 2024-2044 Conference of Plan Economic Development Element with Patrick Arty. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. So I believe that's in the system and I'm sure you'll be able to access that PowerPoint, so just wait a moment to do that. I think the first thing I can say before the PowerPoint is up is, excuse me, as you know, per the Growth Management Act, GMA, we need to produce a comprehensive plan update, which we're in the process of and planning department is in the thick of that. And as you know, there's been planning commission involvement and public open houses and all sorts of great involvement. And there's many chapters. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but one of them, of course, is economic development. And that's what we're going to focus on this evening is the economic development chapter in a moment when we get access to it. There we go. Put it into slideshow mode and we will give it to, I think if you do. Yeah, view, maybe slideshow. We do the view at the top bar there. It says view. Oh, he's inside of it. I was talking about it. There you go. Yay. So, thank you. So with that short little preamble about the GMA and the fact that we do need to update our comp plan, as you know, from a regional perspective, there's the Vision 2050, which is a multi-county planning platform and has policies that have come out of that for a regional growth strategy. And that regional growth strategy has two very important parts, which are a regional transportation plan. I'm not touching that at all this evening. That's a whole different kettle of fish. And then the regional economic strategy. And so then the next slide sort of shows, if you can just hit that, there we go. The region's economic strategy, or otherwise called the multi-county planning policies, economic development portion, has three main goals. You can see there, open economic opportunities for everyone. That hits the equity issue. Maintain global competitiveness as a region and sustain a high quality of life. Those are the three highest overarching policies for the region. And then you can see towards the bottom that there's some new areas that have been highlighted in the more detailed policies from the region related to equity, health, childcare, job distribution, broadband access, housing affordability, which we just heard a lot about, business recovery. This is still kind of referring to the recession caused by COVID and industrial, industrial resiliency. We can move on to the next one. Oops, I think we skipped one. There we go. GMA requires, of course, as I said before, that we update our comp plan. And the Growth Management Act itself includes Goal Five, which is economic development, which is why we have Chapter Five as economic development. And it encourages that we include in economic development. It's not actually required, but most cities our size around the state do, in fact, have one. The goal states, I'm not going to read that whole goal, but it is there in front of you, but it basically talks about the fact that it encourages us to have economic development elements that are inconsistent overall with our comp plan that promote economic opportunity for, well, in this case, the whole state, but in our case, the community and especially for unemployed disadvantaged persons. And that it's still within the capacity of, again, in our case, municipal resources and facilities. It also states that the economic development needs to establish our local goals and policies and provisions for economic growth vitality, which you'll see in the proposal next slide. Imagine Monroe, of course, creates another platform upon which to plan. And the two highlighted components of Imagine Monroe basically touch upon the notion of economic vitality. One focusing on our business districts, including the historic downtown and all the business districts that should provide a thriving and full sort of array of businesses. And the other one, that we can find what we need in Monroe and have great regional connections so that people have that choice to work, live, play and shop in Monroe. Next slide. So the update for the 2024-2044 Comprehensive Plan Economic Development Element is essentially in two portions. There's an existing conditions report, then the actual economic development element itself. And so the next slide, we'll, I'll start with a summary of, what's the next slide? Of the existing conditions. So in the existing conditions report, I should say for you all, and you got this in your agenda bill, and anyone who happens to be watching, that online and in your packet is the detailed report attached with all the details because this is just going to be highlights this evening, of course, for both the existing conditions report and the actual draft economic development element. But as you can see, But as you can see here summarized, and again, I probably won't read everything, but as we all know, the city's population is growing, commensurate with county trends, aging slightly. Um, the medium household income, and I think this is very important vis a vis the discussions we just had, or not really discussions, they were presentations we just had, and discussions we will have in the future about redevelopment, is that the median household income in Monroe has basically caught up with the countywide median household income. So wealth has followed Highway two and Highway 522 in our direction. Uh, another thing is that almost two-thirds of Monroe's population have some college degree to, some college to a full college degree, uh, which is also increasing. We have 70% of the housing market in residential, but 31, excuse me, single family, 31% is rental occupancy. And of course, again, housing costs are rising. And, uh, you'll see the last bullet there on, is that 33, uh, 33% of renters and 22% owners, but it's more important to see the 33% of renters spend more than 35% of their income on housing. That's considered, uh, stressed by HUD standards. The next is just continued highlights from the, uh, existing conditions report, which is not the right slide. I think we jumped one ahead. Arrow upward, I think we may get to the right page. There we go. So this is continued highlights, there's just a few more. Employment has grown, obviously, we've got a large public administration sector in, as our, um, job sectors, which is the city, the school district, and of course, the correctional complex. The majority of residents still commute away from the, from the city, but there's still a growing number that stay. Uh, and then, I'm not going to share these detailed observations, but in almost every regard, whether it's retail, uh, office, commercial, or industrial, the rates have either held steady or increased, the actual estate rates for leasing, and the vacancy has gone down for most, for the most part, especially industrial, industrial is almost no space left. So basically, our, uh, city has, um, very competitive rates for, uh, leasing these spaces, but not a lot of vacancy. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of land, as we've just heard, for housing, nor do we have a lot of land for commercial. And so that's why, uh, there's our pressures to build upward, whether that be for housing or office space or something, um, in the future. So those are the, uh, that's a summary at very high level, sorry, for existing conditions. And again, you have the detailed report, uh, in your packet. Now we'll move on to the next slide to the economic development element itself, a summary. Now, the, the element is, um, basically the compilation, or not the compilation, excuse me, is the, um, a result of a compilation of the existing conditions report, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, I'll just say SWAT from now on, SWAT analysis, uh, review of our, uh, previous goals and policies. And that, all that work done by consultants, then reviewed by staff, and then a very key part, that EDAB members have their review and input. So what you have in your packet and what you'll see summarized here is a result of that process to date. So we'll move on to the SWAT analysis. Um, again, I probably shouldn't read all of it, it's there in front of you. So, uh, the, between, again, between consultant, staff, and EDAB members, a full list of our strengths is, uh, summarized there. Uh, everything from our downtown to the diverse commercial and industrial base we have, to the proximity tourism attractions, to our river, um, riverfront parkland, to the wide variety of commercial establishments we have, connections with the three highways, uh, healthcare, human services. So there's a lot of strengths. Let's just do that again for a second or two before I move on to the next slide, which is weaknesses. And again, there's several that have been identified. There's some concern about, uh, investment in, in continued maintenance of downtown properties, the heavy truck traffic on SR203, uh, the fact that we're still relatively close to the northeast suburbs of the Seattle area, which for a lot of daytime visitors may not encourage nighttime stay. So there's still some weakness in the, in the lodging demand. But there's also the potential for, um, some better lodging opportunities. Uh, again, I mentioned a moment ago, the lack of industrial and commercial land, uh, workforce housing being expensive. Obviously, the railway does create, uh, an issue with, um, the difficulty in knitting together the downtown and the areas north of downtown. Uh, the correctional complex is not a weakness per se, but the concern is just if it were to close and our dependency on that for a fair amount of our workforce. And of course, traffic congestion. And then related to opportunities, uh, we have, um, to kind of follow on what we were being hinted at a moment ago, the North Kelsey area is a great opportunity to develop a center with a mix of retail, residential, entertainment, and housing served by transit, pedestrian, bike facilities. We have some great opportunities for redevelopment in the future, be that the Wolfkill properties, the Monroe School District properties, other large landowners, and underutilized, uh, properties that could be site-specific, uh, planned at a site-specific basis and redeveloped. We have, I think, an opportunity to pursue higher-quality, uh, hotel development in the future. The Fairgrounds has a lot of opportunity for expansion and, uh, repositioning, um, the natural spaces and trail system. As you know, from the parks work that you've been reviewing, we really have a lot of opportunities to make improvements there. Uh, the public realm can be, uh, enhanced substantially through more art, more beautification, more gateway signing. Um, and then there's a specific reference, excuse me, to the Cadman site and the Skoomish River waterfront. Uh, some more opportunities on the next slide. We have some opportunity to incentivize redevelopment in some commercial and industrial areas. The US2 bypass, I know is a bit of a dream for some people, but it's still something that if it were to happen and if we push for it, would really free up the opportunity for US the current right-of-way to become a boulevard and a very attractive, uh, component. Again, high-quality attached housing, um, the gateways continue to be enhanced, uh, and, uh, leverage and incentivize the historic character of downtown. And then, uh, the threats, uh, are in the next couple of slides. We, obviously, just nationwide, there's still a, uh, weakness in the brick-and-mortar commercial establishment, so that's an issue just in general. Again, the correctional complex could theoretically close or substantially downsize, which would be a hit, because there's more than a thousand jobs there. Again, theoretically, the Fairgrounds Park or, and/or the Speedway could close or contract. The airport overlay zone does impose some height limits, as you know. Maybe with new ownership that we've heard about, that could then be taken away. But for right now, it's still, uh, keeping some development, uh, from happening nearby the airport. Again, we don't have a lot of land, traffic congestion is growing. Next slide, just the last few threats, um, underutilization of non-commercial properties or not, excuse me, underutilization of or non-commercial use of properties in our industrial zones and commercial zones. So some of the property projects and buildings in the industrial zone, the Freylands, are not necessarily industrial light manufacturing, which is fine for themselves, but not necessarily helping the job development. Homelessness is an issue, of course, last, lack of affordable housing, um, and disinvestment in some of the historic buildings. So that's the SWAT analysis. Now we're cruising towards the last part of this. Uh, the goals and policies are set out in the final portion of the draft element that you have a copy of. And there are basically five overarching policies. And so, uh, derived from everything we just went through, so I think we can just go to the next slide. So, uh, goal five one is to support the vitality and viability of our commercial and industrial districts throughout Monroe. Very basic concept, but a very important one. And you'll see that we broke it into, uh, four geographical areas. So there are policies, uh, sort of sub-goals for downtown, uh, the US2 Regional Retail Center, North Kelsey area and the Freylands, and then there's sub-policies under each of those that you'll see in the sort of table that's at the end of the element. And then lastly, you'll see at five 1.5, and you'll see this throughout the goals as directed by the GMA, something that addresses equity by, by stating, as you can read there, strive to ensure that business and property owners of all backgrounds and abilities have equal access to resources and services in any business district in Monroe. The next slide, excuse me, is 5.2, providing, uh, and supporting a great place to open and grow a business. Now, here's just a couple sample, I'm only, in each of these slides, I'm only giving you two or three max examples of the policies. There are sometimes up to 15 plus, so. But Foster, Monroe is open for business environment. Work with property owners, developers, and brokers to continue to expand and broaden the retail service and entertainment offerings in Monroe. And, uh, lastly, again, an equity-related policy that I won't read, but it's providing equity. And then 5.3, um, next slide is sustain, grow, and promote Monroe's position as an outdoors adventure and events destination. The base camp that you've heard about before, I won't read the whole thing. Two sample policies, strive to ensure that people of all backgrounds and abilities have access to these amenities, and work with property owners and developers to build the capacity of the hotel motel sector to host more visitors for longer, uh, stays, such as an upscale or boutique hotel, that would turn on, uh, the natural assets, the attraction of the natural assets. Next policy is five, excuse me, goals 5.4, that's a long one, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the, the, the heart of it here is to incentivize continued commercial and industrial growth and development. And, um, basically, the policy there talks again about something that you read in the SWAT analysis, that we have some key locations like Wolfkill, Alborlan Park, Cadman Site, First Airfield, Fairgrounds, et cetera, that could be great redevelopment opportunities, school district properties, for example. So this is a policy that supports actions in the future that could be of that nature. And the last goal is 5.5, next slide, which is, um, coming in a moment. There we go. And this is to provide a full-service, well-connected amenity-rich community that attracts and retains a wide range of residents and employees of local businesses. And again, uh, sample policies such as supporting enhancing the pedestrian environment and facilities that connect our neighborhoods and business districts, and strive to ensure access to these amenities, to commercial establishments, events, activities, et cetera, for residents of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. That is a very fast, high-level summary of two pretty complicated documents that you have in your packets and the public can access on the website. And last slide just invites the city council to offer comments and recommendations now or as we move forward, certainly contact me if you wish. And, um, no formal city council action is needed at this time.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you, Patrick. That was a really great presentation. I know that we have seen some of this information brought to us before, and specifically, I'm looking at Exhibit 38, where we're talking about, um, the, the six parcels. We've got 37 buildable acres might be, might be available for lodging and hospitality development and tourist, commercial, and general commercial zones. So this is just kind of a, a sort of statement, just to let you know that, um, we've got North Kelsey, Hanson Lot, the airfield site, which is First Airfield Airport, Lake Ty site, and the high school administrative building site. So I had flagged this, I think, a while back. And just for clarification, um, I think it might be helpful, um, just in these documents going forward, to use a different description of that site. That's the Old Central School on Fremont and Ferry. And I think calling it the School District Administration Building Site, or AKA Old Central School, might be a little bit easier to understand, because when you read through that, if, that isn't exactly what, well, it's just flat out not what it's called. And, uh, I think that needs to be updated. And then, um, you know, I also read in here that we're looking for high-end hotel development, sort of destination hotels with some character, that that's kind of an overarching goal. And just throwing it out there, that Old Central School, although it is, does have asbestos issues and, you know, obviously needs a ton of work and it's owned by the district, to me, that could be a really great McMenamin's sort of development as a hotel, um, along the lines of Anderson School in Bothell. Uh, I've always thought that that might be a developable, uh, wonderful site for some boutique sort of destination lodging. So just wanted to throw that out there, and I know we've talked about this in the past, but again, that wording on that description for that site, I think, might be, um, could be updated, and that would be helpful.
Just a quick follow-up, you're referring to Exhibit 38, is that what you said?
Yes.
In the existing conditions report?
Yes, yes, thank you so much. And that was a great presentation, really enjoyed reading through it.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
When you keep referring to the Wolfkill property as someplace for development, what kind of development do you think is, uh, would work in the Wolfkill area?
Well, we've had some discussions and certainly I'd encourage, uh, Cooper Knight to jump in if she'd like, but one of the things is, you know, it's got that industrial character. And in some communities, you may have been too revisited, there's oftentimes things like, uh, small-scale breweries or, uh, venues for, um, eating, drinking, and live music, and sometimes just a makerspace, whether people are, you know, doing active, uh, uh, production of, of small things. And it creates kind of an, you could put lights across, you know, the street. In the evening, there could be kind of a, uh, sort of industrial chic type vibe of different kinds of, uh, venues in that area. Obviously, that's just one idea.
Okay, thank you. Industrial chic, I've, I've been to some of those places and I didn't know what I, what that genre was.
Industrial chic.
Any other questions? All right, um, so I would just like to entertain one thing, maybe, I, I don't know if this belongs as part of the SWAT analysis, but, um, I mean, Councilmember Beaumont, um, talking about hotels, um, I, I, and also what we heard in the presentations earlier in terms of, uh, you know, running up against the UGA. I think that, um, one of our threats is Snohomish County's policy that seems to be leaning toward expanding their UGA and allowing more intense uses in unincorporated areas. Uh, for example, uh, when it was being presented today about Cathcart, all of those homes and that new park and ride is in unincorporated Snohomish County. And that's taking away from what could be residential and commercial growth in the city of Snohomish and also in the city of Monroe. And so, um, I, for one, would like to see if we could have a policy developed that, uh, expresses our concern for, um, the county expanding UGA in unincorporated area and allowing for more intense uses, and a bias for, uh, the city of Monroe, um, expanding its own UGA and, um, annexing, uh, and, uh, having that growth occur here. Uh, because otherwise, what's a city for if the county's going to try to be a city?
Yeah. So. It's like a balancing issue, kind of.
I don't think it's even a balancing issue. I think that they see the opportunity to make real estate excise tax and, and general fund dollars and just expand, uh, the growth. Uh, you go to other counties and they, they hold the urban rural line pretty, pretty hard. And, uh, here we are, I mean, we've got a couple of people that are interested in expanding UGA sitting behind you. And we have frustration, because when we go to the county and try to expand in the directions we want to grow, we get pushback. But when they want to grow a different way, because they've got supporters willing to consider doing that, uh, including in the unincorporated areas that are outside of, uh, not even attached to a city. And so, uh, for me, I think that this city, if it's going to grow and be a city, and any other city out there, needs to, needs to speak up and say, look, rural growth belongs in unincorporated county. You know? So I, I would assume that when we're talking about hotels, and I saw the Hotel Dylan in Woodenville and Grace over by Costco, which is also unincorporated, that these sorts of things are things that, to me, should be occurring in the city of Woodenville, in the city of Snohomish, in the city of Monroe. And it's just basic economics and opportunity cost. So, um, I, I think that whether or not that belongs in the economic development piece or not, I just want to underscore with the council that that's growth that should be here. That's an investment in transportation, um, mass transit. You heard the, the developers here talking about mass transit, it should be occurring here. But instead, it's, it's occurring in an expanding, ever-expanding UGA and ever-intensifying UGA in the Malpe area. So this stuff that's theoretical does have consequences on three cities, Woodenville, Snohomish, and Monroe. Uh, and with that said, you see the higher density development and whatnot that happens in towns like Duval. Um, I think that part of that is because the county, uh, of King holds hard that rural urban line. And so the city of Duval then expands, um, because the market allows for it, because they, they, they stopped growing at Redmond Ridge and are not allowing that sprawling growth that King, that Snohomish County does, um, you know, adjacent to Redmond Ridge and down the hill, thereby stealing the opportunity from, for growth from, uh, Duval, uh, like they are in Snohomish County with Monroe. So, thanks for the soapbox moment.
Thanks for that input.
Uh, anything else from the council on this? All right, again, if you've got any comments or anything, please go ahead and email them to, uh, Patrick. I asked you to copy both me and also Deborah, just so that we can track what sort of interest the council has as we try to anticipate things. Um, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to move, um, to the council member reports, but I'm going to do this. If you want to give a council member report, put your hand up. Thank you, Patrick. Okay, Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Uh, music in the park was awesome. Um, and we have also been using the pickleball courts with me and my family. So those are also awesome, that's all I got.
Cool, thanks. Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough, I'm just calling on flags tonight.